All right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. It's the reorganizational meeting, so we need to have an appointment of a chairman or a lady.
Nominate Alicia Malay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well.
Oh.
Close nominations.
Close nominations, okay. Close nominations. Or do we have?
Might I ask, are we gonna have co-chairs?
Yeah, it's vice chair's next.
Well, we gotta get her in first and.
That was what I was wondering.
So, I know, I'm forgetting how it goes, you need a separate vote to close?
Nope.
No.
Nope.
Nope.
Clerk cast one ballot to close.
Clerk class one.
Okay. Okay. And then, so all in favor?
Aye.
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 Close. Did you abstain?
Kinda said aye, but then I felt kinda silly to vote for myself.
I'm gonna post it as four zero one.
Oh, God!
Oh, that's not a good sign. That's not a good sign.
Signs knocked off.
This is a good start to this year.
You can't bend over too easy, I know, so.
I'm never gonna live that down, I can tell that right now.
Absolutely not.
All right, now you can take over and.
Okay, thank you, appreciate the vote of confidence. Um, all right, I'd like to nominate David Mills as vice chair.
Second.
Any further nominations? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Abstain.
We did that, right, right?
Yep.
Okay. Only do it once a year, so. Okay. Great. Okay, so appointment of recording clerk, town manager.
Yeah, it used to be assistant to town manager, but we currently don't have one.
Yeah.
Okay, so, do we have a motion to?
Make a motion, point Ann.
Second.
All in favor say aye. I have a question on that.
Oh, yeah.
Since you posted it as town manager, do we just leave it as the title? Or do we leave it as Ann?
We can leave it as title if you wanted to.
I think we should.
Is it interim?
I think we should label it the way the title is right now.
I do too, yeah.
The interim?
Interim.
Town manager.
But I think the point that Kelly's trying to make is if.
Whoever is the town manager.
We can put her name right next to it, interim town manager, Ann Reed, wouldn't you say?
Yeah, I mean.
That way it covers it no matter what the title ends up being, so.
Well, no, that's not my question.
Yeah, I know your question.
Right.
You know what I'm saying.
I know what you're saying too.
I know what you're saying.
What if, and I'm not, I'm not saying this negatively, what if Ann is not the town manager coming up?
Forward, right.
Then, then you've got a problem.
Well, if you say intern, interim town manager, Ann Reed.
But it's warned as town manager.
As town manager.
For this meeting.
I think keeping it town manager is.
Yeah, whoever's town manager is gonna be the recording.
Right.
Okay. That was just, because I wanna get it clear in a minute.
Yep, yep.
Well, yeah, so, when whatever happens, we can go back and this is what we meant.
And, well, no, you can, you can put this item on your agenda if and when there's another appointment with a name.
Right.
Because it's warned this way.
Right.
Right now.
Right.
Yeah.
I get it.
I know, because it could, yeah, it could be town manager, and then it could be like in parentheses, interim town manager, Ann Reed. Right, does that make, does that, that makes even more?
I see what, I see what you're saying, it's the way it's warned.
Not the way it's warned on your agenda.
If it was written that way, it wouldn't be a big deal, but it's not written the way.
Let's just leave it, I think it's clear, I think it would be clear to anybody what.
Yeah.
What the town is.
The way it is now.
Okay.
Um, all in favor, we had a first and a second, right?
Yeah.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, appointment official newspaper, the Brandon Reporter.
So move. Second it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Adoption of select board meeting schedule.
I have a quick thing on that. Um, before you adopt it, May 7th, I will not be here, so I don't know if we wanna adjust the schedule, or if we wanna figure out how to get everything to you, because I'm gonna be gone April 30th to May 8th. And it's a long span.
Uh huh, because it's five Wednesdays this month.
It's five Wednesdays in, uh, April.
So could we change that to May 8th? Would that give you enough time, or not? Wanna go?
Well, I'm just not sure how to get you guys packets or information or anything, because I'm gone a Wednesday to a Wednesday. So I said we could meet Tuesday, Tuesday, April 29th instead, because that would be almost two weeks from our, because we're meeting April 16th.
What is the day in question again, Ann?
What?
What is the day in question for you?
May 7th. Or, I mean, that's something I can get out, if we just wanna not mess with the schedule.
Well, that was one thing, I mean, I'm gonna miss certain days that are on here just 'cause, so I don't know if you wanna mess with it.
I'm just, I'm just concerned about getting information to you guys, because I'll, I can get everything ready, like the 25th.
Yeah, I think if you just leave us stuff, we can, you know, and then I can have.
We'll figure it out.
We can play catch-up the next time if we miss something.
Yeah, so let's just leave it the way it is. Did anybody else have a chance to get, to look at this and see if there was any other glaringly, uh, I think one time we accidentally had a holiday on there, I didn't really.
I checked this time, I checked too.
Okay, cool.
I checked too.
All right.
There's always days I'm gonna miss.
These are the, I'm.
No, you're on the calendar.
All in favor say aye.
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 I'm on the calendar.
All right, let's get to appointments of officials and various boards and commissioners. All right, delinquent tax collector, Ann Reed, wants to that job bad.
Question. In the past, that chunk has been done as a whole.
Nope, you're right.
I don't wanna do that again.
The only, well, then, the problem is that there's a couple like kind of question marks in them.
Yeah.
Animal control officer, we still have a second vacancy.
Well, we can cover vacancies down below with appointments to fill vacancies among officials, board members, and commissioners.
Right.
Yeah.
Under new business, but the only question we had was Rutland Regional Transportation Council.
You or Chad?
It's me or Chad, neither one of us care which one it is.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Alicia wanted to stay on, I guess Alicia was, is not the alternate, it would be Chad or myself is alternate, and Alicia is the.
Yeah, I love tack, not gonna lie.
So we cross Alicia off as alternate?
Right, and then either myself or Chad would be alternate, and. So you're just reversing the two?
Yeah.
Yep. And Chad and I didn't care which one you guys chose to be the alternate.
Well, what do you think is more, what do you think, um, I mean, you and Chad.
More beneficial, yeah.
Yeah, who's, obviously Chad's.
Are you allowing just one alternate?
Can we, you can't have two?
I don't know, I've never been to a tack, anything.
Why couldn't you have two alternates?
I don't think, yeah, I don't know if it matters, I mean, we only get one vote as a town, but that doesn't mean, matter for alternates showing up just to get, get, you know, gather information.
Okay.
Think we could have two alternates.
I would, I would think you could. If not, they'll correct us.
So change or to and, and then that way, as alternates and.
Mm-huh. And then, um, you, uh, oh, that's kind of a whole nother discussion itself, we are running pretty low on the rec committee, in case anyone noticed.
Yeah, and that's gonna be an entire conversation.
Could I suggest that we block up everything else and wait on the, talk about the rec committee separate?
Sure, sure. Okay, and then, um.
Nobody else, nobody said they didn't wanna.
I did, I, I didn't ask this year, most of these people every year say yes.
Okay.
Um, and some of them were like, why are you sending me a letter again, I've.
Yeah, 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 okay.
So. I figured if I catch them every couple of years.
Okay.
Could I make a motion that we adopt the appointments for all positions listed except for the rec committee at this point?
Sounds good.
Second. Go ahead.
All in favor say aye.
So what's going on with the rec committee?
Well, we just had some people retire, um, and then I know.
Did Rob get off?
Yes.
Yeah, Rob, he got off.
Rob did, somebody else did, and Jill Blanchard's considering it, so they might end up with three vacancies. Wasn't Kathy Short sleeves on the rec committee?
She is still on.
She's still on.
Kathy's still on.
Is she just not up, is that why she's not on the?
She's not up, so hold on a second, I'll go make sure I got the right book. Right now you have Kathy Short sleeves is 2026, Hillary Mullen is 2026, and then Monica Keith is no longer on it, she decided not to be. Kelly is, Jen Pop is, and there's two, um, Jill Blanchard got off and Rob kept him.
And we have four people right now?
There's four on.
Yep.
I would say let's go with the ones that wanna go and post these two vacancies right off.
Yeah.
And see if we can get some vol, this time of year you might get volunteers, it's gonna be spring.
It's gotta be someone wants to do it too.
I think people need to know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, I mean, I heard just, I've heard like some talk about whether there even should be one or not, but I think that might be for them to decide if they wanna dissolve themselves, I mean, I know that ultimately, I guess, would be the select board, but.
Pretty valuable actually.
I think so too.
I was on it for, I was on it for ten years.
Who were you?
Great for information for Liz, I know many of them don't, like when she's looking for volunteers, she, it's, she's not getting a lot of tickets.
And that's why if we advertise for vacancies, hopefully we get some new blood on there that, you know, um, will just reinvigorate some of, you know.
Say, I was on for ten years, and it was, we had plenty to do.
Yeah.
It wasn't like there was, and it was better having a group, because then we can help each other, it wasn't like it's one person end up with it.
No.
Has it always been six, around six?
Six or seven.
Six or seven?
Yeah. Usually it's full, usually.
Couple years ago, didn't it, Tom?
I'd like to make a motion that we go with Jennifer Pop and Kelly for the rec committee and post the other vacancies immediately.
Second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, good. Okay, um, so we do have one executive already on the agenda, does anyone have anything they need to add?
I might like to discuss maybe why a couple of these people are getting off.
Okay.
Can we add that?
Yeah, second personnel. Okay.
I also need to further amend the agenda to have approve liquor board minutes from our last meeting, and then add coin drop requests from the Rutland County Humane Society. Could I have a motion to?
Motion to approve agenda as amended.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so yes, we have select board minutes of February 19th and the liquor board minutes. If there was any questions or deletions, additions.
Nope.
Okay. Uh, town managers report, excuse me.
So before I get into town managers report, I just wanted to clarify the SNAPU and the town report at town meeting, um, and it, it was human error, it was my error, I took the 2023, 2024, um, town report, what I did was I took the 22, 23s, copy and pasted the entire document over, and I had known that Wonderfeet Kids Museum had done their petition correctly when I was working on the warning, and I knew that, um, the food shelf had successfully got their signatures for the $2,000 ones, and I was waiting for the select board to approve the budget before I changed the numbers to what was approved. So if anybody looks back, both years have the same exact figures for Articles 2 and 3, because I didn't go back and change them once the budget was approved. So that's what caused that. And if anybody has questions, they can ask me. Town managers report, I attended the winter, uh, Ramon Governor Finance Officers Association meeting, and they were on overtime and labor costs was what they were discussing, uh, one of the people was from the IRS, so it was interesting. Um, I attended the cybersecurity training Monday, February 24th at Hub Works in Rutland. If you haven't ever been to Hub Works, it's a really cool building.
It is.
It's a really cool meeting space. Um, and I can see what we're doing with Silway is in line with what we need for cybersecurity, it's just gonna take us a little while to get fully functioning. I attended the ZBA hearing and meeting on Monday, February 24th, I let them know about the mandatory ethics training, some of them were already aware of it. And then I attended the Tri-Town Trails meeting with Judy and Mary Ann from Procter in West Rutland, as well as Stephanie Burke from Regional Planning. They're working on finalizing plans A, B, C, D, to be able to present to select boards to say, pick which one you think would be best, so that they can move forward for the next phase of the plan. Um, I also talked to Pittsburgh Village Farm, because one of their options has a, a trail that goes down, I get the right, name of the road wrong all the time. Town Hill, Town Hill, I've called it Town Line, Town Farm, Town. I've renamed it six different times this week to Chad, poor kid. Um, and, uh, they already have a trail that goes from there all the way over to Depot Hill, and part of the Tri-Town Trail wanted to do the same thing, so I met with Baird, and he actually gave me all the GPS coordinates that they have mapped out for their trail that's already existing, so I was able to forward that over and tell, uh, the committee that that was already up and running, so that was good. I met with Silway about the next phase of our computer software upgrades, I've asked them to hold off on this for a little bit, but some more of the glitches with emails worked their way out and everything before we started, we are gonna do some simulation and get training for Pat and myself before this goes into effect for the next phase, because it's gonna be an undertaking. I attended the planning commission hearing and meeting that they had last Thursday, February 27th, and they were finalizing portions of the enhanced energy plan, I gave you guys each copies tonight, Jeremy sent them over, they are missing the maps right now, uh, Regional Planning was waiting for a closer to finalized draft before they started mapping, uh, what the planning commission needs for maps, so those will be forthcoming. Met with Otter Creek Engineering, Markowski's and Sean about the Plains Roads project, that project has been paused until warmer weather, uh, because the frost is about three and a half feet in the ground at the moment.
Yeesh.
Yeah.
Before paving?
Huh?
Before paving, or they stopped digging?
They've stopped everything, the whole project has been stopped until, I will call them though about the holes. And then Sean and I also met with Otter Creek Engineering to discuss all ongoing projects and what the status of each project was, so I had an idea of where we are with everything. I've been working with Procter Gas, and Bob Foley about the first response building, had a heating issue, uh, it's temporarily been fixed, and I have a heating quote that was received for a new heating unit in there, uh, $4,600 with labor and everything to get a new heating system in there, the one that's in there, they're guessing is 40 to 50 years old.
Meeks.
Yeah, it's all.
They had a really hard time finding a piece.
That's within your realm anyways.
Yep, it's in, within my realm, but just, when you look at your, um, thing later, you're gonna see, we had to do a half deposit, so you'll see it on your warrant.
No choice on that one.
No. Uh, water shut-off notices have gone out to 47 residences, I really, really wanna urge residents that are struggling to pay, before it gets to water shut-off, please just make a repayment agreement, it saves the town money, it saves a headache, it costs about $12 apiece, not including my labor to stuff and do them, because I have to send them certified mail and regular mail. So, if people do the repayment agreements when they first get the bill, it's much, much easier and a lot less paperwork and a lot less financially for the water and sewer departments to do them.
Is there a note when the bill goes, delinquent bill goes out?
So.
To contact you, or?
So the first time they get a bill, those that I know that are gonna need repayment agreements, because they've done them with me in the past, or I look at the dollar value, which might not necessarily be the right way to do it, um, I always put a repayment agreement in. Um, I don't usually put them in for businesses, businesses are pretty good about just paying their bills, but individuals, so when the bills first go out, they get a repayment agreement. When they get their delinquent penalty and interest, two days after the due date, they get, everybody gets a repayment agreement then to fill out, and then the next step is water shut-offs. So we are at water shut-offs, they will be shut off on March 18th, unless they're paid or have a payment agreement in place at that time.
Does the state ever step in on any of these to prevent shut-offs?
Um, the only way they can be, um, halted is if you have a medical necessity, and you get a medical doctor's letter saying that we can't shut your water off due to X, Y, Z, 1, 2, 3.
Wasn't there something that, at the, at the house, was brought up about, like they do with the electricity in cold weather, they can't be shut off? I've heard of that one.
Not for water.
During COVID.
Not water.
During COVID, we couldn't.
It was just on the news the other day, but anyway, it doesn't affect this yet.
During COVID, I don't believe they could do water shut-offs, um, by the time I started here in May of 2022, we could do water shut-offs again, at that point, there was financial assistance for those that desperately needed it, there's no longer those safeguards, unfortunately. But I am willing to sit down and work with people with a repayment agreement, it's the best I can offer. I'm gonna be out of the office on March 11th, just an FYI, I am doing staff meetings again, and there will be a staff meeting at 11:30 next Thursday.
Amen.
Yes.
Amen.
I have, um, I have a list of some things that I wanna bring to our staff members, including the mandatory ethics training, some of them know that they have to do it, some of them don't. I'm gonna highly suggest that all employees take it, just so that they have an idea of, if somebody comes to them, they'll have an idea of what we're talking about, but I do know it's mandatory for all department heads.
I appreciate getting those going back again, I think.
The employees.
I think staff meetings are, I think they actually enjoy them.
And it's needed.
And it's needed, and it keeps everybody on the same, keeps communication, you know, open and.
Well, and the department heads seem to be happy that I'm bringing it back, I am bribing
them with pizza this time.
Hey, yeah, there you go.
Perfectly acceptable.
I want them all there and participating.
Yep.
Um, I think it's important.
Typically, we're all, it's been invited to those also.
Yeah, and you're more than welcome, that's why I'm wanting you to know, that's when it's gonna be, is 11:30.
If three of us show up, you have to warn it?
Huh?
No.
No, because you're not conducting business.
You're not conducting business.
We can't talk about.
You can ask them about their kids and stuff.
Yeah, but that's it.
Um, I did meet with Devin Neary today, um, planning commission timelines and deadlines for the zoning plan, the town plan, and if we want another plan, uh, to get a Level 1B certification for the next phases for Act 250 and all that stuff. Um, and I'm moving forward with Pittsburgh Village Farm, Green Mountain Power, and the electrician on the EV chargers, um, massive miscommunications yesterday, but we will be getting an updated quote within the next couple of days. And then, I just wanted to point out, I gave you guys all the police statistics, and we're up almost double last year to this year for the volume of calls they've taken.
Number of calls?
Well, if you look, um, the total for, between family disturbances, vandalism, larceny, thefts, assaults, tickets, burglaries, everything, on the total column, as of February 28th, we've done 1,068 of them, last year at the same time, it was 589.
Wow.
What, 400 tickets?
A lot of it is traffic tickets, um, which we are seeing, this is probably gonna fluctuate a little bit, because, uh, Suya is up at Academy right now, but we are working, um, and I know we have two guys that are still really doing highway safety and trying to keep control of the traffic problem, but I just wanted to point that out to you, because I thought that was pretty massive today when I was filling this out.
I've had a lot of people remark on the speed in town, how it's dropped.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Even just driving through town.
Just driving through town, I've noticed it myself, I mean.
Yeah, I think it's working.
Speed limit rates for the village, and people aren't pushing, you know, they're staying back, so it's working.
So, I, I just thought it was important to point that out.
Yeah, it's working, they're doing a good job.
And I think that's all I have.
Okay.
Been a busy couple of weeks.
And what?
It's been a busy couple of weeks.
I have one question for Ann before we move on.
Yeah, yep.
And I might have missed this, Ann.
Yep.
On the, on the first response building.
Yep.
You gonna replace the heating unit in there?
Yes.
All right, did, did you get quotes from some different places, or we just up one?
We did Procter Gas, because that's Procter, Procter Gas is in charge of all of.
They do all of our gas.
They do all of the propane.
And it's, it, with propane, it's pretty tough, because if somebody else comes in, you've gotta change your supplier.
You've gotta change your supplier to them and everything, we have a contract with Procter Gas, we signed it for three years.
You can beat them up a little bit.
Uh, yeah, that's my point, I.
But, if, if we bring in another contractor.
It's gonna cost you more.
They're not gonna work on the system as long as the propane supplied by Procter Gas, they can't.
Right.
I know, I just went through it three or four times.
I've had a different outside contractor into working on the gas system.
You can have a contractor, but they're not a supplier.
Yeah, no, but I mean, there's others that do it, I mean, I've had private individuals do it for a different rate than what the company would do it for.
In fact, Procter Gas sends me, what are they, the gas guys, when they, because they're depleted in their workforce, but the, the gas guys are independent, they don't work for Procter Gas, so.
Josh is the one that actually did the work down there, he'll probably be the one installing it.
Okay, I, I, just with that, you know, we're putting a new system, I think sometimes you gotta watch what you're doing, these systems can vary tremendously.
It hasn't been done yet, am I right?
Has not.
Did, did you decide on what system you wanted, or the size and all that?
They quoted what they thought was appropriate for the building, I am not a propane gas heat expert.
I.
Um, Procter Gas is our supplier, am I right? It is their supplier.
These couple guys, the gas guys are more proficient, in my opinion, and the ones I've used, when I've used them, they were less money, so I don't know if we wanna contact them or not.
I just think it'd be good to get a, an idea from, if, an outsider, you know, on that, doesn't mean we have to shut them out, if it's closed, then it's fine, but I do think we should have a couple other inputs, rather than just going with one bid, that's.
So you're saying the gas guys will work on Procter Gas as hookups?
Um, sometimes Procter Gas even hires them.
Hire, oh, okay, okay.
I just don't.
Long as independent guys have the certification.
They do.
It's, it's not, it's not that big a deal.
They, they can work on anything, because they're not a supplier.
Most of the time, the, the pressure check's done by them, and they have to stay to the Most of the time, the, the pressure check's done by them, and they have to stay to the same standards that the supplier would. That's what I've seen, at least when I've used them. Correct?
Yeah, I think on the supply end, whether it's Procter gas, or Irving, or anybody else, before they turn the gas back on, they do have to check the connection to the heat system itself.
Correct, yep.
But these other guys, or anybody else-
They're all certified.
Yeah.
So they, they do have heat right now, though?
They have it right now, yes. And I'm just crossing my fingers that nothing else breaks on it, because I've been told that we're not, it took almost a week to get the one piece they needed, and it took a lot of scrambling to try to find it in a warehouse.
Old equipment.
Very old.
It's hard to get parts for new equipment, even though it's less old.
Um, everything's a pain.
I was lucky Sean and Chad scrambled and let them borrow electric heaters, and Bob was down there with a propane one at times, too, because of the temps dropping.
That's good, yeah.
Over the weekend.
I would suggest we get one or two more places on a new system. Just to make sure we're all in the ballpark. If it is, it's no big deal. You can probably make a call if it's close, it's no problem. But just to make sure we're in the ballpark.
Over.
Dave Forrest is also propane certified.
Davis?
Yeah.
Yep.
I don't know how busy he is, but you wanna contact?
Yeah, you can get it to me after the meeting.
Great. Any other questions for, uh, Ann? Has anyone seen the tri-town plan at all? The tri-town, uh, trail plan?
No.
Is there, is there-
Coming here in the past.
Yeah.
They're finalizing it to be able to give to the boards.
Oh, okay, yeah.
So you'll be getting plans A, B, C, and D. I think there's four of them, so you'll be giving them-
Yeah, no, I've seen them. I think it's really cool. I just wanted to see how, if everyone else had, you know, seen them.
The preliminary, I haven't seen any or not. Four different plans isn't four different ways to go, basically?
Kind of, yeah. And some of them have like a secondary trail, like the one, um, Town Hill Road, because it stops-
Line Road?
Yeah. Whatever. That road is down there on El-
Down Gold Road.
Um,
It's a gold.
It, um, because of the creek, I guess there used to be a bridge there, and the bridge flooded out like forty or fifty years ago. So that would be a secondary trail, because we'd have to look at the price of putting a bridge in. And I'm like, eh, but they already have that listed as a secondary trail.
Why not?
What about those, I thought the state, they don't just give away those bridges they're not using anymore?
I have no idea.
Remember Atherton just mentioning that? Remember that the bridges out, can't use the traffic?
The village-
Well, the bridges burnt years ago. They burned it down. The one that crossed the-
Across the creek, yeah.
Chad was concerned about putting a bridge back there. He's like, it floods out so much there, we'd be constantly trying to hold down the bridge.
Yeah.
Hold it in place, so...
The village farm now owns the two hundred acres down below. When did that happen?
Well, they said they, I heard them say they had a hundred and fifty in total.
It's a hu- well, well, they just got-
Yeah, I've sold that, and yeah, I did the W R P excavation down there, but it's two hundred and something.
Wow.
They mentioned that.
Unless they didn't buy both sides. Well, what I'm saying is-
Maybe they got one side of the road.
Maybe, but they could run their trail down to the bridge, through the bridge, and back down the other side of the creek, and then the trailer goes over to Hards. Is that part of it?
So the one that's on Hards that starts as the road and then changes to a legal trail, that's the part that has the bridge that's wiped out?
It's not there.
The bridge is no longer there.
Yeah, well, this would bypass the bridge.
Yeah. I, they're not sure what they're gonna do with that part. That's a secondary one, so that would be even after putting in the first set of trails. Um, but Pittsburgh Village Farm already has one trail that goes from Depot Hill Road across to that trail.
Was, was that parcel sold by, um, a government organization like the Nature Conservatory or something to them?
I sold it for, from, for Bob Forrest to, um, the W R P. Bob sold it to the W R P.
I think they kept some land. They didn't, all of it didn't go to the town, if I remember, when, I felt they kept some of it.
All of the lowland was sold to people from Texas first. Bob had got the lease from W, the W R P lease, so you can't, it's very limited use.
Yeah.
Then they sold it to the couple from Texas, and then they sold it. So somebody else must have gifted it or something to the-
Yeah, I thought it was, I thought it was a hundred and some odd acres.
It must be just one side of the road.
It's a hundred and fifty, I think, or a hundred and twenty-five, is what I heard.
Well, the north side of the road keeps getting smaller every year, right?
Yeah, it does.
Um, okay, any select board member remarks?
Um, I had a few citizens comment on our discussion about Town Line Road.
Yeah.
The, the comments on gating and such, and they were all-
Anti.
Big no's.
No, yeah.
Anyway, it was, it was a few, more than a few.
Yeah.
Just wanted to make that comment.
Okay, sure.
There's not that kind of feeling like that is something that they want.
Yeah. Um, I guess I'll just mention that. I did see on Facebook that the food shelf, their egg supplier is cut off. So if anybody's got chickens, or know anybody that has chickens, that wants to donate some eggs to the food shelf, that would be awesome.
Do you know how much they need?
I have no idea.
They do fifty to sixty families a month, and they usually give each family two dozen eggs.
Hundred dozen?
And they're cut off completely, I think.
Currently.
I saw something also on Facebook that a Pittsburgh resident is looking to donate ten dozen a week.
Oh, that's nice. Very cool.
I'm not gonna say any names, because it's in Facebook land, but-
Yep, I know. I actually think I know. Yeah, there's also, you know, I, I'll bring this up, I guess, at the next meeting when I can, it's not gonna get on Facebook right now, obviously, but there also is a younger guy in town that started like a trade, like a, like a swap kinda thing just for Pittsburgh, you know, so-
If you need flour and-
Yeah, 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 which I think is really cool.
Cans of soup, they swap stuff. It's like a swap thing.
I think it's just called Pittsburgh Swap, or something like that, so anyways.
Uh, on Facebook?
Yeah.
I saw it on Facebook. Last week I saw that.
Yep, I know. I signed up for it. I haven't done, like, I haven't traded with anybody, but I just think that's a cool idea. You know, you might have extra of something and-
Urban on there?
I'll trade some pumpkins for that.
All right, any other select board member remarks? Any public comment? Not even anyone on Zoom, huh?
Nope.
Nobody on Zoom?
Sheesh.
Nobody even came tonight.
Gosh, I know. All right. All right, old business. Um, all right, our ATV ordinance?
Still limbo here.
Oh, she did, did Gary, uh-
So Gary commented, and he said it looked good to him.
Okay, well, that's all we were waiting for.
So then we can go ahead and-
Schedule hearing, right?
Schedule hearing, at this point.
Do we need to, we still need a vote?
Still need a vote, yeah, still need-
And I will second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And then, um, so two, two hearings, certain dis- I forget the parameters.
So usually, when we've done ordinances before, you guys approve it. I put an ad in the paper, and then I post it in four places around town. If anybody wants to petition against it, that's when they would do that, and that's when we would have a hearing. I don't think you have to have a hearing.
Usually we do our hearings-
Oh.
In conjunction with your meeting.
Because, because it's been posted-
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Well, no, you've, you've done it, and it's like, like liquor board.
Right.
You recess, do the hearing, and then come back in.
Okay.
But we, right on it, we say how many times it's been on the agenda, so I, every time it's on the agenda, I add another one, so that we know that it's-
It's been discussed.
It's been discussed, it's been warned. People have had, I think this is meeting number four or five, to be able to bring their comment.
That will count, that will count, then.
Cool, good, thank you. Um, Town Hill Road concern.
I'm sorry, I didn't even see that, yeah.
No, I didn't.
Um, so- So Chad, I asked Chad, because there was concern Baird had talked about gating before Davenport's property. It is a Class Three road down, it is for point three miles. Davenport's house is at point two miles, so there's another point one mile beyond him that is a legal road before it changes to a trail. It does change to a trail, but it's not until point three miles down the road. And it's well beyond any residents on the road.
And we cannot gate the town, Class Three road.
So they were talking about proposing a gate where the town road ends?
We know that for sure.
And it becomes a trail? Is that correct?
Baird had gave a couple different locations that he wanted a gate. Um, neither one of them is feasible with the Class Three classification of that road for the point three miles. It goes beyond what he was-
There'd be no place to turn around to gate with that.
Point three's gotta be getting close to the tracks, right?
It is.
It is.
Point three is where the forest little pit was on the right, which could be turned into a, and the village farm owns it. Am I right? Well, they do now. They can change that into a little parking spot, or turnaround at least.
Yeah.
I just wanted to, you guys had asked me to look into it, and that's where it was, and-
That just may be one of those things that maybe we let the police officers know, and maybe they just, I don't know, go down there every now and again?
Right now, they can't get beyond Davenport's, because there's a giant pile of snow, so no one's gonna get very far.
It's not an issue at the moment.
It is not an issue at the moment.
On purpose, so nobody heads down there.
Right. So, could we put up a sign, local traffic only, so that people see that it's just people who are supposed to be down there? I mean, that wouldn't cost a lot, and it might, might cut down enough to appease Baird. Is that an idea?
Well, it costs you a sign, that's all.
Exactly, yeah.
It's worth a try. I think the main thing is, is the trash and stuff they-
I know the trash is the issue, but didn't, don't people go fishing down there?
So I had, I did ask Chad about the trash issue, 'cause I, I asked him, you know, if they travel down there, if they see a lot or anything. He said he does know that there were all those carcasses in the fall, and he's like, it's carcass waste, you're gonna find it on any smaller road.
Right.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's gonna be gone.
It's compostable. Um, and then he said they did have that car that caught fire that was-
So we've had the long-
And he said, but he hasn't been called down there, and he said if, if there is a concern, you know, if there is a large amount of trash, if somebody calls my office or the highway garage, they would go down. But he said they haven't really seen it down there. Um, I don't know if Pittsburgh Village Farm's been cleaning it up and not saying anything, or how big of a concern it really is, but Chad says he hasn't really seen a whole lot of activity down there.
New business. Review results of town meeting.
Do you want the tally?
Sure.
So I got the tally. There were four hundred and thirty-three voters that came in and voted on Tuesday. For moderator, there were eighty write-ins, um, forty-five of which were for Rob Spensley, and then there were a variety of other people for the rest, but because he was more than half of them, Helen pointed it out to me. Uh, for three-year term for Alicia, she had three hundred and sixty-two, ten write-ins, and sixty-one people did not vote. Uh, David Mills, uh, three hundred and sixty-seven, nine write-ins, fifty-seven didn't vote. Uh, trustee of public funds, three hundred and eighty-three. For Butch Shaw, seven write-ins, um, and forty-three didn't vote. So, can you copy that and send it to me?
No, five people, no, no, hate my guts, and like, eww.
Well, yeah, we both got, we both got like seventy that hate us, so they didn't even check our box, so... Just I got seventy, you got seventy-five.
I think a lot of people, you're running unopposed, so they don't bother.
Don't bother.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A lot of it.
Yeah, if there was five people that saw our names, ignored me, went right to-
He didn't cross it out.
I'm sorry, whoever you five, whatever I did.
Or they just missed the circle. Can't please everybody.
I know. Um, oh, okay, well, we already did our appointments, right?
But this is, so this is where you could, um, do Rob Spensley for moderator.
Oh, right, okay.
Because he was a write-in, and he had more than half the write-in votes.
Yes, and he said he was happy to do it.
Point, Rob Spensley is moderator.
You can appoint him?
Second.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I thought he did a great job.
Yeah.
He did a good job.
He did a good job. I know, this'll, was that his second or third, third year?
Second year.
We gotta give him a gavel.
I already ordered one. I already ordered one.
Ooh, a new gavel.
And a bottle of water. Well, we all needed bottles of water.
Yeah.
I wrote copious notes of what needs to be brought, extension cords, gavel, water, um, a few other things.
I know.
I went and bought a gavel, 'cause I ain't know, I've, I've never seen-
Did you actually go get one?
Yeah, it's coming on Amazon.
Gavel dot com.
Eight dollars.
I was gonna ask you where you got it, but of course, online.
Eight dollars.
But the worst part is, a year from now, crap, where did I put that?
No, I will know where it is.
There you go, okay. With me, I'd be like, the day before, it's like, where did I put that?
It's in the garage somewhere.
Ann's organized. We should get food next year.
Okay.
And then, I don't know.
I thought they used to do that.
Yeah.
We used to, and like, I don't know, we need to get, oh, a sandwich board.
I ordered it.
Good, 'cause there was no sandwich board in front of our town hall. There was one sandwich board in front of the, the, um,
Bank to say voting.
Just for voting day, but nothing about town meeting.
They gotta pick that up, too, by the way, it's still down there.
They're talking about a sandwich board for eating.
Well, that's what I thought.
Of course you did.
That, too.
Do we have one stock somewhere? We don't have a bank.
Okay.
So we had to order another one, because our second one was held together with duct tape and pay, uh, binder clips, and it was no longer gonna function. It wasn't, it, the, almost. The letters fall all the way through to the bottom, and then you try to like sticky tape them back up, so...
Not good.
We bought another one. It will be here middle of next week, so we'll have it.
I think, I know, we should, I kinda, I wanna see if we can get at least a hundred people next year. Right, I don't think there's been, since I've been on the board, I don't think there's been more than like seventy-five people that's ever showed up.
It was a massive point of conversation in my office yesterday, with people coming in and out. And I had some people saying, how do we get more people there? And I said, incentivize with food, do like a pie social or something.
Yeah.
And then, I said, maybe switch it to a Saturday, so it's not on a weeknight. Um, and then we had some people asking about Australian ballot for budget versus, um-
They've tried that for years, and this time it never would work.
That's not a bad idea, you know, a potluck pie.
Yeah.
And bring them in and just have coffee and that, that's not a bad idea at all, Ann.
It, it might draw people in.
Then I have to get the word out, 'cause a lot of people don't pay.
I always thought, too, like, if we had, um, I don't know, if we had some teenagers that were willing to babysit, so people could, you know, have their kids be downstairs in the cafeteria and know that they're fed and safe.
Yeah.
'Cause it is dinner time, you know what I mean? And for people with kids, it's, it's hard. I know it's hard, you know?
Yeah.
It's hard.
Maybe we would think outside-
He comes working, picking up all the chairs. Bring him next year.
He looks like a sard.
You know, maybe we think outside the box for next year to try to get more.
Yeah.
Um, maybe we do an informational meeting that's before town meeting to get input, too. I was telling you about the hundred dollars, how would you spread it out among your departments thing?
Yeah, I know. Let's keep it going on the agenda. Let's keep this like an open conversation. We have, you know, yeah. We'll make next year exciting. This year was a little boring, but next year's gonna be super exciting.
So on, on the vacancy thing?
Yep.
What would you think if we had our rec director send a note out to all the parents whose kids have signed up for a spring sport, telling them that there's an open position at the rec?
That's not a bad idea.
It's not a bad idea.
You've already got a list.
She can, well, she, she does a newsletter anyway, so she can put it in there.
Yeah.
And then she also can post it on MyRec, because MyRec has spaces for her to post.
I'm just wondering if you send one directly right to those parents? You know, they're, they're probably participants. They'll probably jump right in to help. It might be worth it, get one, why not?
I know, and the rec department has its own Facebook page, so it could go, yeah, in multiple places. That's a good idea. Yeah, and I'm sure she, she could reach out to the school, and they can put it on their, in their newsletter as well, and yeah, that'd be great. Good idea.
The other thing we should mention, too, is applications for, uh, assistant town clerk.
So the assistant town clerk and bookkeeper positions, I posted on Rutland Herald for four days coming up. I've put it on Indeed.
I'm here, too, I mean.
It, it's posted out and about, too. Um, and then I did it on V L C T's website today, so it's in three more places than it was before.
Is anyone else coming? You said assistant town clerk, bookkeeper, is that two positions?
No, it's-
No, that, that's basically what-
Same position.
Same position.
Was his position was. We're going to have a second position in August that we're going to have to fill.
Yeah.
So, um, we're looking for somebody that might have a little bit more bookkeeping experience than Liz had.
Maybe do both.
And work.
Hopefully. Well, I think we've only had one applicant so far.
We've only had one applicant so far.
That's why we need to get the word out, that, you know.
So.
It's, it's a good job locally.
It is.
Sure is.
It's a full-time position. It comes with benefits.
Benefits, nice working conditions.
Has health, dental, life.
If you send me something, I'll put it on the town's Facebook page. All right. Um, was there anything else that we, uh, from officials, board members, and commissioners? I think that was it, right?
I think so.
Okay, um, all right, if there's nothing else on that. Highway posting approval. This is our yearly, yearly, uh, mud, mud season.
They're doing it a little differently this time. We don't have the list that you have to approve. They keep it digitally now. So basically, you have to approve the backside of the letter that I gave you.
Your service?
Um, so that I can post it tomorrow, so that we can post the roads. So this notice here is what I need you guys to agree to allow to be posted.
This guy right there?
Yep, yeah. It's just the backside. The front side tells you what, but it says this rule does not become effective in a particular town until it has been filed with the select board. So I am filing this paper with the select board, so that we can post our roads.
All right, sounds good. Do we have a motion?
I saw a move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um, and then, so highway budget worksheet approval for, um, AOT grants?
So I gave you the updated one tonight. It looks like this, but it has everything filled in. Um, I had to wait until our budget was approved before I could fill in the numbers. Um, I had to wait until our budget was approved before I could fill in the numbers. And basically I need you to approve it and then sign the back of it so that we can put this in for our structures grant and our paving grant. I've already submitted those. Chad got the pictures that they were asking for, so they're waiting for this documentation to finalize our two grant applications.
Yeah, because this due, is it due by April, right? This, the grant application?
Yep, so we made sure to get them in.
All right. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Um, okay, anything on, um, orders?
Don't forget coin drop request.
Yeah, I got that after, thank you.
Nope. We answered the questions before.
Yeah, I know, I guess we did look at some of them already.
No, I'll have Pat pull the Procter Gas one and hold it for now.
I think if you do talk to anyone else, I give them a timeline, so you have to get it to me by X date. That way you don't have to wait around.
All righty. Um, okay, and finally, coin drop request. So the Rutland County Humane Society has requested October 11th. Is that the right date, Ann?
Yes, from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m.
Hold on, hold on. Does everybody remember what happened this past year?
Wait, wait, yes. Need, they need to have the, uh.
There was two people out there with no safety equipment at all. I took pictures. It was terrifying.
That's right.
I'm surprised neither of them got to buy a car. They had, they didn't have any, like, no cones set up. They didn't, they clearly didn't reach out to the fire department for any of the safety equipment. That was.
Yeah, that was a biggie.
They're terribly unsafe.
They do have a new executive director and I have emailed her our coin drop policy, which does outline that they need all of that safety gear.
Okay.
I emailed her the V transform that has to be filled out and approved by District Three offices before they can host it as well. And so she has got everything in order to do it properly and I told her that these are the rules that have to be followed.
Yeah, as long as they're going to.
In the past, though, which surprised me, they always did it correctly.
Well, it did sound like they were between directors. There was some kind of lack of leadership there.
I called you and I called Alicia because even me driving through there, I'm like, what in the world?
I know, and as soon as after you texted me or called me, I did, I walked, I walked right over and I was like, I couldn't even see them until I was like basically on them.
Because they had started down that north, northern slope.
Yeah.
So as long as they're going to do it safe this year, but that's, yeah, that's, you know. And I guess we'll have to have something in place where if they don't, we shut them down right away, I guess.
So I, I will email their new executive director and let them know our concerns with the safety.
Yeah.
I think that would have to be a rewrite of the ordinance that was just put into effect last year.
The policy, yeah.
Yeah, the policy.
Um, could I suggest we table this until we have a response from them that they are going to do this, either a signed response to you or something that, well, if I, I don't.
That's fine with me.
Yeah, I wasn't hip on this weekend anyway because it's a terrible weekend on the road.
Oh, yeah, it is.
Yeah.
And, you know, there's often, there often have been between the fire department, right, and the library, I think we.
Fire department does one, the library does one, the humane society does one, and then.
American Cancer Society.
I mean, they, we, we usually do cones like, I don't know, what's at a good, almost like a half mile before.
There's usually warning by Sunoco.
Yeah.
We start warning from the Sunoco.
By the funeral.
Basically two people standing in the middle of the road with buckets. It was crazy.
No vests or anything.
Yeah, they had no safety vests. It was the Humane Society last year.
When we talked about dates, I was against this because that weekend is so busy on the road. I thought October 1st was a better draft, so I, that's, it makes it more even complicated because that's a terrible weekend for traffic.
Right.
I think that's why they like.
But that's why they like it because they do well. They do very well.
I was the one, no.
I'm okay with tabling this until we just, just, yeah, get some kind of verification from them that they will have a safety plan in, in place and follow, follow the ordinance.
And you can remind them of what happened last year in the letter.
Yep. All right, cool. Um. Yeah, oh, now we have, okay.
Liquor board.
So recess, select, select board and open up as a liquor control board. If anybody had a chance to look at, um.
There are no new ones that I saw.
There are no new ones.
It's all the usual.
All the same, all the usual. I would think we can make a motion to approve all of them at one time.
I would second that motion.
One point of discussion, are there any complaints on any of those?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
That's what Helen said. I asked it.
Yeah, no, absolutely, absolutely.
No.
Any other questions or concerns?
Nope.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right, let's come out of liquor board, go back into select board. And then, um, barring any other business, if I could please have a motion to go into executive session.
I need a motion to go to executive session.
Hold on.
You got to sign.
You got to read it, yeah.
Oh, shoot, yeah. I'll start reading while, I'll start reading while you guys start signing. In accordance with 1 V S A 313 A, where premature general public knowledge would clearly place municipality or person involved a substantial disadvantage to discuss the appointment, employment, or evaluation of a public officer or employee, provided that a public body must make the final hiring or appointment decision and explain its reasons for the decision in open meeting. 1 V S A 313 A 3. Have a second to go into executive after we finish signing?
Yes.
Or first, I guess, or do we have first? No.
Tom's your motion.
Yeah.
I'll second it.
Okay.
All of these are the liquor ones that have to be signed.
So again, to do after we are signing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.